Madam Chair, I think we are ready to go.
Okay, let's get started. Good morning. I now call to order today's meeting of the Board of Supervisors for the University of Louisiana System. Carol, will you please call the board?
Mr. Barry Busada.
Here.
Dr. Jimmy Clark.
Here.
Dr. John Kondos. Mr. Steve Davison.
Here.
Ms. Lola Dunahoe. Ms. Mimmy Methfin.
Here.
Mr. Al Perkins.
Here.
Mr. Dana Peterson.
Here.
Ms. Elizabeth Pierre.
Here.
Mr. Virgil Robinson. Mr. Mark Romero.
Here.
Ms. Christine Russell.
Here.
Mr. Joe Salter. Mr. Brad Stevens.
Here.
Ms. Julie Stokes.
Here.
Ms. Loriele Williams.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Carol. And welcome to every one of you. I would like to advise you that the content of today's meeting, including chat, will be recorded and subject to public record requests. So please keep that in mind as we do that business. To members of the public who are viewing this via YouTube, we remind you that anyone who wishes to make a public comment on a particular agenda item can email publiccomment@ulsystem.edu. And along with your comment, please include your full name, affiliation, as well as the agenda item upon which you are commenting. Thank you. At this time, may I have a motion and a second to, one, accept the certification to operate virtually, and, two, to dispense with committee deliberations and meet as a committee of the whole.
Done.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Lola Dunahoe, seconded by Mr. Mark Romero. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Uh, Mr. Salter, at this time, will you please lead us in an invocation as we begin our meeting?
Yes, I will. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity we have to serve. We ask, Lord, for your leadership and guidance of in our meeting today. And Lord, it is our desire, our decisions that we make are in the best interest of, of the taxpayers, citizens of our state, and also the students of our state as well, Lord. Uh, also, as we approach this Christmas season, I ask, Lord, that you keep uppermost in all of our minds that treason for Christmas, uh, the gift that you gave, uh, many, many years ago. And, Lord, we thank you for that. We would also ask that you would help us to be mindful of those, uh, during this particular time of year that are less fortunate than we are, and help us, Lord, to reach out to those individuals in any way that we can. Again, we thank you for your many blessings and forgiveness of sin, for Christ's sake. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mrs. Salter. Uh, today, we welcome our newest board member, Julie Stokes. Ms. Stokes was appointed by Governor Edwards to replace Mr. Kitchen, and she will represent the first congressional district. Brandon DeClear, will you please administer the oath of office to Ms. Stokes at this time?
Certainly, Madam Chair. Uh, Ms. Stokes, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, and state your name.
I, Julie Stokes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent on me.
Incumbent on me.
As a member.
As a member.
Of the Board of Supervisors.
Of the Board of Supervisors.
For the University of Louisiana System.
For the University of Louisiana System.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you, Brandon. Uh, Ms. Stokes, would you like to make a few comments?
Well, just, I'm, I'm honored to be part of this board and, uh, really look forward to getting to know all of you and, and trying to get a good quality education out there to the citizens of our state in the most efficient way possible, but, um, the best education we can give them. Um, I'm honored to be part of this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and we welcome you to the board. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Um, you're welcome. At this time, may I please have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of our last two board meetings? This will be the October twenty-eight, twenty-one, and the November eighth special board meeting.
Done.
I think that was moved by Ms. Lola Dunahoe and seconded by Mr. Dana Peterson.
Yes.
Are there any questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those motions stand approved. As I said today, we are meeting as a committee of the whole, which means that everyone can vote on all items. Each committee chair will conduct the business of that particular committee. Are there any questions? Thank you. Uh, we'll start with our academic and student affairs. Dr. Clark, would you please address the items under the Academic and Student Affairs Committee?
Certainly, Chair Pierre. Uh, we have two items on the Academic and Student Affairs Committee agenda. Both of these items require approval. Uh, Ms. Erica Colley, Vice President for Student Affairs, will provide the report. So, Ms. Colley, if you'll take it.
Uh, yes, thank you, Dr. Clark. Good morning, Chair Pierre and board members. As Dr. Clark said, we have two academic and student affairs committee items today. The first is a memorandum of understanding for Grambling State University with the United States Department of Homeland Security. This MOU is designed to enhance outreach and engagement efforts and expand recruitment, internship, and employment opportunities with the Department of Homeland Security for Grambling State University students and recent graduates. The proposed program will increase the visibility of career pathways with DHS through agency participation in lectures, presentations, career fairs, on-campus career orientations, and other awareness activities and events. Current students and graduates will also benefit by learning more about the Department of Homeland Security, such as its mission and job opportunities. They will also receive tips on how to write a federal resume and develop a deeper understanding about the job application process at the federal level. The second agenda item is a request from the University of New Orleans to enter into an MOU to urban construction management with North Shore Technical Community College. This would be in agreement with the College of Engineering of the University of New Orleans and North Shore Technical Community College that would establish a transferable pathway for NTCC students to become eligible for direct admission into the College of Engineering at UNO. The pathway would provide students with transparent and systemic outline for successfully completing the bachelor's degree from UNO in urban construction management and an associate degree or certificate of completion from NTCC. The partnership will facilitate students' access to a relatively new degree program as of February twenty-twenty-three, seamless and concurrent blend of curriculum. Both of these agenda items have been vetted at the campus levels and at the system level. These MOUs will not only benefit the students, but will also strengthen external partnerships that will have a direct impact to Grambling State University and the University of New Orleans. So, Dr. Clark, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Colley. Um, I want to commend both the institutions, uh, for working on these memorandums. I think that they certainly, you know, bode well for, for students. Um, do we have questions from anyone? If no one requires for the clarification, then I'd like to go ahead and recommend approval of items F-one and F-two. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Boy, I tell you what, I'm, I'm not as good as Chair Pierre in recognizing who said what there. So I, I will defer to someone else to, to decipher that.
Well, I made, I made a motion, but I, I think someone else did at the same time.
Well, Mimmy, I'll take you as the, as the, as the motion, and who is the second?
Brad Stevens.
Thank you, Brad. Seconded by Brad Stevens. Uh, any, uh, further questions, comments for the board? Any comments from the public? Hearing none? All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion is approved. Um, and with that, uh, there's no other business, I believe, to come before the committee. So we'll move to facilities, I think.
I think the next committee is athletics. Um, is someone presenting on behalf of Dr. Kondos?
I am.
Okay.
We, we have two items, uh, on the athletic committee today. One is a consent agenda item, and the other is discussion about conference dynamics. Mr. Bruce Janay will provide a brief overview of the consent agenda item for the University of Louisiana at Monroe.
Uh, thank you so much, Ms. Russell. We appreciate you chairing the committee. Item G-one, University of Louisiana at Monroe's request for approval of a third amendment to the contract with Mr. Tim Baldwin, who was the head men's golf coach effective November sixteen, twenty-twenty-one. What the university wants to do is extend his current employment contract end date to June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two, as well as the date of his salary supplement from, from December sixteenth. I'm sorry, from December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two as well. That is the only item for consent we have, Ms. Russell.
Thank you very much. Uh, this agenda item has been reviewed by staff and is recommended for approval. Does any member have a question or wishes to discuss this item? Seeing there's no questions, any other comments? Any comments from the public? If no one requires any further clarification, can I get a motion and a second for approval of item G-one?
Romero moves.
Thank you, Mr. Romero.
Davison seconds.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll enter into a discussion on conference dynamics. Dr. Klum will give a brief overview specific to the Southland Conference, and Dr. Henderson provides some general comments.
Well, supervisor Russell, as, as, uh, Dr. Klum prepares to, to come forward, I thought this would be an interesting, uh, conversation for the board, uh, to, to, to listen to. As you know, conference dynamics are not something that are new. Uh, in, from the seventies into the eighties, mu- mu- many of our schools were in the old Gulf States Conference, uh, that changed into the Southland Conference. And we see schools move from time to time. It's very much an institutional decision, uh, that, that, but it certainly has, uh, impacts that ripple across multiple areas of the system. And we currently have, uh, one school that is a member of Conference USA that's Louisiana Tech. One school is, is a, a member of the historic SWAC Conference. It's Grambling State. We have two schools that are a member of the Fun Belt, excuse me, the Sun Belt Conference, sorry. And, uh, we have five schools that are a member of the Southland Conference. This year, earlier this year, Oklahoma and Texas announced that they were moving the Big Twelve, long affiliated, uh, with the Big Twelve, and we're moving into the Southeastern Conference. Now, as I was growing up, Oklahoma was part of the Big Eight, and Texas was part of the Southwest Conference that no longer exists. I, I mentioned that to say that this is not new. What is new is the speed at which these conferences, uh, realignments are occurring and the frequency with which they're occurring. And I think it's the statement about, uh, the modern disposition of college athletics. It has become a big money business. I did caution some stakeholders to, uh, to not get too caught up in the immediate short-term decisions, because these decisions are likely going to last two years, and you're going to see another swell of realignments. I think this is part of a larger, uh, somewhat cataclysmic, too strong of a word, but seismic shift in the landscape of, of college athletics that, that's going to take a couple of years to play out. Uh, the, the NCAA is, is looking at some basic constitutional factors to evaluate as they go forward. That's going to have an impact. But for those of you who may not be familiar, the member institution presidents make up the board of directors of their con- conferences. And since we have five members of the Southland Conference, uh, our own Jay Klun is, is the current chair of that conference. And I asked Jay if he would just give some thoughts, and then if any board members have comments or questions, certainly we'd be happy to entertain those. But, uh, Dr. Klun, welcome, and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. Uh, we are, uh, in that, in that very dynamic period with conference realignments, um, threatening the existence of some conferences, and certainly we were there. Uh, we were sort, sort of brought back from the edge by a very engaged board of directors and, uh, an incoming conference commissioner, uh, Chris Grant. Our commissioner, Tom Burnett, who is also the NCA Division One Men's Basketball Chair, will conclude his twenty-year tenure, uh, this spring semester, at which time the reins will pass to Chris Grant, former student athlete who brings broad conference experience and leadership and commitment to innovation, uh, widespread change, uh, expansion of the conference, and also a rebranding of the conference. As we look ahead, we're very excited that Chris will be leading us at a time which is really of unprecedented change. We don't expect it to stop this year or next year. Uh, we were successful in maintaining all Louisiana schools in the conference. Uh, we have brought multiple sport championships to Lake Charles, Louisiana, to help that city recover from the ravages of Hurricane Ida. Uh, we have our conference that maintained all of our automatic qualifier positions to the NCAA playoffs. Uh, they're all in place, and almost every team in the league is positioned to win at least one of those coveted positions. Uh, with the new leadership and a truly engaged board with Dr. Crane, Nick Glover, Cal and Jones as part of that board, I believe the brightest days of the conference are truly in front of us. And if there are any questions, uh, we have a number of board members on the call that can certainly answer those for you. Thank you, Dr. Henderson.
Thank you, Jay. Uh, members, are there any questions from board members, or, uh, there's not, there is no crystal ball, and there is no, uh, master plan at this point to move forward, but, but certainly it is something we need to, to, to pay attention to and be engaged as the presidents navigate some, uh, some uncertain waters, and be happy to answer any questions or the board may have. Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Uh, that, that concludes, uh, this bit of information. And it's, again, as things materialize and become more concrete, we'll certainly keep the board engaged, uh, as appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Klun, as well. Uh, no action by the board is necessary. Do we have any other business at this time? And if not, that would conclude the business of the athletic committee. The next committee would be the facilities planning.
Good morning. Uh, before we take up the consent agenda, Southeastern has requested that their item H-six, related to a ground lease with the foundation, be removed from the agenda. So, uh, if I could have a motion and a second for approval to remove item H-six.
Dunahoe move.
Second, Salter.
Thank you. Uh, we need any discussion? If not, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Yeah, appears the motion has, passes. Uh, we now have eleven items on the facilities planning, uh, agenda that are all consent agenda. Mr. Bruce Janay will provide a brief overview of the agenda by campus. Mr. Janay?
Thank you mu- uh, thank you so much, Mr. Busada. We do have a number of items, and I will try to be as brief as possible. And I also wanted to let the board members know that I have their presence available as we encounter any particular questions related to their university. The first item is from Grambling, item H-one, approval to amend its five-year capital outlay plan, a mission to include the project campus-wide protective barrier. The original plan submission was in August of twenty-twenty-one, but did not include a project to plan and construct a perimeter structure to increase safety and security. Grambling is an open campus low, that is located in the town of Grambling. A perimeter structure will provide better control of traffic to the campus. The campus, uh, has approximately twenty, has approximately fifty-three hundred students, five hundred and staff. After a review of other institutions of higher learning, a protective barrier fencing has become a way to mitigate risk. Grambling estimates that the cost of this project would be approximately, uh, uh, eighteen million. Item H-two is from Louisiana Tech, approval to enter into a ground lease with the Louisiana Tech University Foundation for the purpose of constructing a champions plaza as authorized by state law. Louisiana Tech further requests permission to name the plaza, the Sarah and A.L. Williams Champion Plaza, in recognition of A.L. Williams' many contributions to Louisiana Tech University as an athlete, and Sarah's involvement in reaching young people and teaching them the importance of value of great character and leadership. The University and the foundation estimate the value of improvements to be, to be one point seven five million. Upon completion of the plaza, the lease will be terminated, and all improvements to the site will be donated back to the university. Item H-three is from McNeese, approval to enter to a land lease for ten years with AdSource LLC, so they can construct a billboard on the university-formed property. AdSource, in turn, will pay the university a thousand dollars a month or fifteen percent of gross sales for the billboard, whichever is greater. Funds that are generated will be used to help with future improvements at the formed property and support the College of Agricultural Sciences. The lease can be extended mutually if agreed upon by both parties, and the extension will have to receive approval from the Board of Supervisors. Item H-four from Nichols, approved into a ground lease with the Nichols State University Foundation for the construction of enclosed batting facility at your softball field. The ground lease consists of an identified area located in the rear of the softball field at the corner of Acadia and Ordwin Drive. The project costs approximately a hundred thousand dollars, and the university will grant a two-year period for completion of the project. Item H-five is also from Nichols, approval to enter as well into a ground lease with the Nichols State University Foundation for interior improvements to Stofford Gym, Stofford Gymnasium, which is also authorized by state law. The project costs approximately one point two million. The renovation will include painting, installation of new seating, and other related work, as well, the university will grant a two-year extension for completion of the project. Item H-seven is from University of Louisiana at Lafayette. They are requesting approval to apply to the federal government for acquisition of and to acquire at no cost certain land and buildings owned by the United States of America. There are three permanent structures on the site and other move, mobile buildings, and the university, if this goes through, would receive approximately twenty-eight acres. The University of Louisiana Lafayette New Iberia Research Center per- currently operates and maintains the property pursuant to a license for use of real property from the National Institute of Health dated September of nineteen ninety-nine. The center uses the property for scientific research conducted or sponsored by the NIH and other federal agencies, and for health-related programs and educational research activity. The NIH has now determined that it has no need for the property and has therefore turned it over to the Federal General Services Administration for disposal, provided that no other federal agency asserts a need for the property by December first, twenty-twenty-one. A property will be made available to state and public entities. Timing of this approval by the board is critical to allow the university to acquire the property at no cost, as the General Services Administration advises that the university will have a thirty-day window of time to do so before it makes available to the general public for the purchase, and that this window is, has commence starting December first, twenty-twenty-one. Item H-eight, also from the University of Louisiana at Lafayette, approval to amend its five-year capital outlay plan to include planning and construction for four projects that were not included in the original submission. The first project is the NIRC BSL-three lab and animal house. Having a BSL-three lab and facilities associated with the New Iberia Research Center could have reduced to the development and approval of one of the vaccines by three months, which probably would have saved many lives. The closest BSL-three labs are in other states competing for federal and private research funds and projects. The cost of this project is estimated to be twenty-four million. The second project is New Iberia Research Center Bio-Innovation Accelerator. This will create a good manufacturing practices, certified manufacturing facility as a contract drug manufacturing organization to meet the current national security risk of reliance on for, on form, for, foreign pharmaceutical manufacturing. The university anticipates that this project would be approximately twenty-five million. The third project is L, is, uh, UL and LSU Health Science and Center Collaboration. This is a project anticipated at thirty-five thousand square feet of health sciences education facility in collaboration with the Health Sciences Center that would mirror a program that's currently at Our Lady of Lick in Baton Rouge. The Our Lady of Lourdes property, located adjacent to UL Lafayette's main campus, is in the process of being acquired by UL Lafayette. There is a need for additional medical education programs and facilities in Louisiana. This project will help alleviate that shortage and will complement the new nursing education facility current plan, currently planned for this site. This project is estimated at thirty-five million. Finally, the, the four, four project that they're requesting is known as the UL Lafayette Learning Lab. This is a project to renovate, rebuild, and expand a federal and national marine fisheries building that's currently located on the university's commons property. That building will revert to UL Lafayette property once the fed, once certain federal agencies move. The UL Lafayette College of Education is reimagining teacher preparation by embedding a demonstration lab, school showcasing, and immersion, future Louisiana teachers in innovative teaching and learning that breaks the mode of traditional schooling. This project entails renovating current building and space and adding new buildings and space as well. This will create a new learning lab school with up to a hundred thousand square feet of grades K through eight, and a high school educational resources. The cost of this project is estimated to be thirty-five million. Item H-nine is from University of Louisiana at Monroe. They're requesting approval, and of course, with the board rule, for the naming of the head track and coach field office in Brown Stadium to Charles H. McDonald, and to allow for other naming opportunities in the future for Brown Stadium. Item H-ten is also from University La- uh, Lafayette with naming. Approval of naming commitments are wait received for the Wally Jones Golf Complex that provided construction funding, and allow for other naming opportunities. And item H-eleven is also with naming from University of Monroe. They're requesting approval of naming commitments that they have received for the Stanger Young Leadership that, of donors who helped provide a construction funding, and they want to re- receive permission to do other names. Um, Dr. Barry has provided all of these specific names and rooms to those items in the board packet, and I wanted to ensure each of you received that. And earlier this week, I emailed each of you these specific names and rooms. And those are the items that we have, Mr. Busada.
All these item, agenda items have been reviewed by the board, legal staff, and are recommended for approval. Of course, if any member has a question or wishes to discuss any of these items, please let me know.
Just a, I, I feel like drinking out of a fire hose a little bit, trying to, you know, go back. I want to go back just real quickly to H-four and H-five, Nichols State. I'm just curious, in terms of the length of time on those, the, the ground leases, I know that the ad, uh, was for ten years. What was the length of time for the? ad was for ten years, what was the length of time for the next two?
Two years, expect to be, expect to complete within a two-year period and then donate those improvements back to the university.
Okay, so the lease takes place for two years and then it's a donation back to the university?
Correct.
So, okay.
Up to two years, it, you know, it'll probably be done sooner, but but the university anticipates a time of two years.
All right, thank you. And just to, just to point a comment, I wanted to commend UL Lafayette for inclusion of a, the possibility of a lab school to be constructed. Certainly, teacher preparation in the community, so many would benefit from that. The state certainly would benefit from the experiences of those teachers. I just want to make that comment.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions?
Sure, Chair Basada, just one, Mark Romero. I want to certainly commend the University of Louisiana Lafayette as well for their insight and development of the research campus in New Iberia. I know Dr. Carruth has worked diligently to bring opportunity and funding and expansion there. That was a critical site for the development of vaccines for the current pandemic, so I thought that was a good insightful move to expand our level of capability there. So I want to commend he and Dr. Savo for the vision and determinations they're putting towards making this a reality.
Thank you.
I have a question, Chair Basada. I have a question regarding item eleven. I wanted to ask a question as it relates to, I know it states that allow for other naming opportunities in the future. Is there a process or has a process been put in place as to how that will go about far as any naming in the future, far as who are they considering or there is consideration, nominations, and to make sure that that group reflects the university and that particular community, make sure, and in taking that into consideration far as who gets those naming opportunities? Are there any, is there a process in place to make sure of that as well?
Would you like to speak on that, Dr. Barry? If, if not.
Bruce, Bruce, if I could, any of those names that will come up will have to be submitted to the board in accordance with, with board rules and procedures, is that correct?
Yes, sir. And Dr. Henderson, what Dr. Barry has done, he can expand on it. He's gone out, he's got commitments. So what we've done is allow for future namings, and then what, what we'll do, once those names are obtained, then, then we'll come back and present that to the board, just like we're doing for the Laird Wings today, that, that the university, I think, has completed that. So that is an agenda item that I wanted to send to the board, it'd be a report only, but it does list all the names.
Right. And, and, and I definitely appreciated my, I guess, my, and make sure I understand the process. Generally, when that is coming to us, those people have already been reached out to, and I'm not going to say it's become official, it doesn't become official until we voted on it. I guess I'm more concerned in how the vetting process takes place to where this even becomes the names presented to the board to even consider. That's the part that I want to make sure that that process is in place so that we are getting a group that properly represents those opportunities for naming thing to come to us. Because a lot of times when stuff come to us, you know, we're figuring that all that due diligence has been done, which it has. So I'm more interested in what the process would be far as those future naming opportunities.
Supervisor Perkins.
President Barry.
This is Ron Barry. Thank you for that question. We do have a policy that is in compliance with system policies, and I'd be happy to share that policy with the board members if you'd like to see it. But in terms of naming, we have very specific requirements. And before a name is released to a donor, it has to be approved by this board. So we do not confirm a naming until this board has approved it.
President Barry, I appreciate that. And I understand you said you can forward that policy to us. Is there a subcommittee at your level that is going through a vetting process of those names for that to be submitted to us?
It's through our University of Louisiana Foundation, Monroe Foundation, and that's where our policies exist. These donations run through our foundation on campus.
I would like to have a copy of those, of those foundations, to know what that process that's in place for that particular thing. So if you can forward that to me or any of the other board members that may want it, I think that will be helpful, definitely for me.
Yes, sir. Be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the board?
Mr. Basada, I would also like to be included on that email from Dr. Barry on the policy issues.
Okay, thank you. We'll make sure that happens. Anybody, anyone else on the board? Are there any?
Basada Davidson here. I need to be recused on item H two, but I'll be voting on the, the other items in global.
All right, thank you. Is there any comments from the public?
Mr. Basada, I do have one comment from the public. On, on the vote, we will, we'll need to vote on all of the items except for H two, and then there will be a separate roll call vote on H two, since we have Mr. Davidson recused. But received a comment from Angela Lee Moody Ryan from Grambling State regarding item H one. The comment is, good morning, I would like, I would ask the following regards to upcoming campus security plan. Other than fencing in the campus, what campus security infrastructure improvements will be included? And the proposed campus security plan to give students and staff a reasonable level of safety assurance. They need to be able to state they will have developed a multiple-level security plan, which includes at a minimum restricted access, vehicle access with access card or IFID credentialing, license plate reader cameras to log vehicle access to the university, running NCIC checks against the state vehicle database, enhanced student ID cards with proximity sensors to indicate on, off-campus and provide access to all buildings on campus, CCTV on all access points into campus facilities, increased personnel to monitor cameras and vehicle access, increased training and accreditation, CALEA for the GSU Police Department. For question two was what entities collaborated with Grambling State University to develop the proposed campus security plan that it consult with outside security professionals, state police, or other police departments? The answer to that question is yes, they worked with multiple layers of both local, state, and federal police authorities. Question three, if funded by the UL system and losing a legislature, what is the timeline to initiate and complete the proposed campus security plan? Will there be an ongoing process of providing, providing a strategic plan and security threat assessment to maintain or improve the security level on GSU campus? Whatever they may decide to do, they need to have a timeline for project completion with accountability in the process, since they have a record of not completing projects. Your strategic plan and security threat assessment will allow them to update their plan based on environmental threat changes to maintain high levels of preparedness. So that was the public comment. I will tell you that President Gallo has developed as part of their first campus-wide master plan, that campus safety and security is a key component of that. We have discussed at length, bringing in technology and using the latest advances in technology to come along with physical barriers, and we can ask for him to report on that in a future meeting. But this, this piece is one important piece, and it was important for us to get this added to the plan. Happy to answer any questions on that. Also on item H two, I think it's important for the board to know, sometimes when we're naming these facilities after people, this one is named after A.L. Williams, and A.L. and Sarah Williams were longtime upstanding members of the Louisiana Tech community. A.L. Williams was a high school standout at Fair Park High School in Shreveport, went on to coach at, played football at Louisiana Tech, coached high school in Shreveport. He had players by the names of Joe Ferguson and Terry Bradshaw, who you may have heard of, went on to coach at Northwestern State, and then was a legendary coach at Louisiana Tech. He and his, his family have done immense work for, not just Louisiana Tech, not just for football, for the entire state of Louisiana. And, and I just thought it was important that the board know who they are, who we're discussing when we bring these agenda items up. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. If there's no further comments, I would like to ask that we go ahead and approve all except H two, we'll, we'll do that in a separate vote, so all in favor through H one through H eleven, with the exception of H two. Please say aye if you're in favor.
I. Do we have a motion?
Oh, we didn't have a motion, I'm sorry.
Arrow offers a motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve all items except for H two.
Second, Methfin.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Now we, so it passes, now we need a motion for the H two. Do we have a motion to approve H two?
Romero.
Romero approves, Salter second, I believe. All in favor?
Mr. Basada, because we have a recusal, we have to do this as a roll call vote.
Oh, okay. All right, we have a roll call vote.
Okay, Mr. Basada.
Yes.
Dr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Dunahoe?
Yes.
Ms. Methfin?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pierre?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Salter?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Stokes?
Yes.
And the last one is Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, that's passed.
Thank you. We have one final item, H twelve. I'd like to again ask Mr. Bruce tonight to go over that with us.
Thank you again, Chair Basada. Item H twelve is also naming from University at Monroe that they wanted to provide an update. On October twenty-six, two thousand seventeen, the board approved ULM's request for approval to name the new Foundation Alumni Building, the Laird Wings Center, and allow for other naming opportunities in the future. The university wanted to update the board on the namings today. And again, Dr. Barry has provided within your board packet a listing of all the rooms within Laird Wings and all of the names. And this is a report only, and no action by the board is necessary.
Thank you. Do we have any other business at this time? If not, that will conclude the business of Facilities Planning Committee. And do we have a motion now to adjourn?
So, Mr. Chairman, we don't need a motion because we're in a committee as a whole, we'll just move to the next committee item.
All right, that will be finance.
At this time, I'd like to call to order the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee has eight items on its agenda today, six of which are consent items and two are discussion items. Mr. Mish, will you handle the consent agenda items, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. I one is Louisiana Tech's university's request for approval of the Board of Supervisors for the University of Louisiana's system for execution of supplemental leases between the board on behalf of the university and Innovative Student Facilities Incorporated, connection with refunding of all or a portion of the university's outstanding Series two thousand thirteen bonds. Louisiana Tech University through Innovative Student Facilities Incorporated would like to refinance its Series two thousand thirteen bonds. The Series two thousand thirteen bonds previously refunded Series two thousand three bonds, which originally financed the construction of student housing facilities. The total principal amount of the refunding bonds is estimated to be fifteen million dollars, which would be sufficient to pay the costs associated with retiring the Series two thousand thirteen bonds and the cost of issuance of funding the refunding bonds. After all costs over the life of the bond issue, the gross savings on the refunding is expected to be one point five million dollars. As with the two thousand thirteen series bonds, this refinance will require supplement and amendment of the existing board ground lease and facilities lease with Innovative Student Facilities Incorporated. Item I two, Louisiana Tech's university's request for approval of the Board of Supervisors for the University of Louisiana's systems for execution of supplemental leases between the board on behalf of the university and Innovative Student Facilities Incorporated in connection with refunding of all or a portion of the university's outstanding two thousand fifteen bonds. Louisiana Tech University through Innovative Student Facilities Incorporated would also like to refinance its Series two thousand fifteen bonds. The Series two thousand fifteen bonds previously refunded Series two thousand seven bonds, which originally financed the construction of student housing and recreation facilities. The total principal amount of the refunding bonds is estimated to be approximately forty-two point five million dollars, which will be sufficient to pay the costs associated with retiring the Series two thousand fifteen bonds and the cost of issuance of the refunding bonds. After all costs over the life of the bond issue, the gross savings on the refunding is expected to be approximately one point seven million dollars. As with the two thousand fifteen bonds, this refinance will require supplement and amendment of the existing board ground lease and facilities lease with Innovative Student Facilities Incorporated. I three, also Louisiana Tech. Louisiana Tech University's request for approval to enter a cooperative endeavor agreement with the city of Bossier City and the parish of Bossier for the public purpose of constructing and managing the Louisiana Technology Research Institute facility. Louisiana Tech University is requesting permission to enter a cooperative endeavor agreement with the city of Bossier City and the parish of Bossier. The cooperative endeavor would allow the university to contribute a funding to an amount not to exceed seven million dollars for the completion of construction and functional readiness of the Louisiana Technical Technology Research Institute facility, which is presently ongoing. In exchange, the university would receive a rent-free lease for the exclusive right to occupy, manage, and use the facility for the purpose of research and economic development. The lease will have an initial term of thirty years with two ten-year renewals. Facility will have three floors comprising approximately seventy-eight thousand square feet with the second and third floor housing accredited classified space. The university will be responsible for all maintenance and operational cost of the facility, which will recoup through space use fees and rental fees from third parties who rent and sublease portions of the facility. I four, Northwestern State University requests to revise the current Crow Allen Scholarship Award Amount. On October eighth, two thousand eight, Northwestern State University received four point four million dollars for a natural gas lease of university property in DeSoto Parish. The tract of land was donated to Northwestern by the late Mr. John Henry Crow. Louisiana revised statute seventeen thirty-three sixty-seven requires revenues from leased property to be used for benefit of the university where the leased property is located. Northwestern allocated approximately two point four million of these funds for endowment for student scholarships. The endowment and the scholarships are named for Mr. John Henry Crow and Dr. Art Allen. Northwestern State University is requesting approval to increase the Crow Allen Scholarship Award Amount from five hundred dollars to fifteen hundred dollars per semester. This increase would begin in the spring of two thousand twenty-two. Award criteria for the scholarship would not change. I five, University of Louisiana Eppen Rose requests for approval to amend the university's existing lease with Barnes and Noble College Bookstores LLC and implement the first day complete program, the lease amendment. The University of Louisiana Monroe requests approval to amend its existing lease with Barnes and Noble as contracted bookstore operator. The original contract was entered on November twelfth, two thousand fifteen, and this first amendment would become effective on July one, two thousand twenty-two. With the amendment, Barnes and Noble would pay ULM the greater of a guaranteed amount of two hundred fifty thousand dollars or a calculated commission of thirteen point six percent for general merchandise gross sales up to three million dollars to fifteen point six percent of general merchandise gross sales over five million dollars and ten percent of all gross sales of the first day complete program. If gross sales decrease for specified reasons in the amendment, including decreases in enrollment, the parties agreed to renegotiate the financial terms of the agreement. the parties agreed to renegotiate the financial terms of the agreement. Barnes and Noble would also manage the first day complete program, a Barnes and Noble inclusive access textbook rental program on behalf of U L M. Barnes and Noble would be responsible for procurement of textbooks and course materials in accordance with course materials adopted by faculty. The first day complete program. In order to expand textbook affordability to students, the University of Louisiana Monroe requests approval to implement a first day complete program for all courses beginning with the fall two thousand twenty-two semester. The first day complete program would include course textbook costs with tuition and fees, creating an average of forty to fifty percent savings for students while retaining the academic freedom for faculty to choose the best materials for their courses. Course materials would be available to students on the first day of class. Students would pay twenty-five dollars per credit hour per semester. Students would have the option of opting out of the program and securing materials on their own. If students do not opt out, they would be charged for the course materials. U L M, working with Barnes and Noble, will educate students about the first day complete program. I six, University of Louisiana Systems' request for approval to establish L E Q S F eight G, endowed chairs, endowed professorships, endowed superior graduate student scholarships, and endowed first-generation scholarships. The Louisiana Education Quality Support Fund, L E Q S F, provides for grants to be awarded upon receipt of private donations for the establishment of endowed professorships, first-generation scholarships, graduate scholarships, or endowed chairs. Management boards are required to authorize the establishment of the endowments prior to the submission to the Board of Regents for matching funds. The following campuses have submitted for matching funds. Louisiana Tech University, George Leroy Erskine Junior endowed graduate scholarship in the College of Engineering and Science. Justin and Jeanette Hinckley endowed Superior Graduate Scholarship in the College of Education. Justin and Jeanette Hinckley endowed Superior Graduate Scholarship in Biological Sciences. Dana Miller Packard endowed Superior Graduate Scholarship in the College of Education Counseling Psychology Program. Arjit endowed Superior Graduate Scholarship in College of Business. Gary A. Moore family endowed professorship for the College of Business. Joy Lynn Moore and Sidney W. Campbell professorship for the College of Education. University of Louisiana at Lafayette, Kathleen B. Blanco Public Policy Center endowed chair, Educational Innovation Research and Policy endowed chair, Joel Lafayette Fletcher Junior and Ralph W. E. Jones Senior endowed Superior Graduate Student Scholarship in College of Education. University of Louisiana at Monroe, Frank and Susan Hoffman Superior Graduate Student Scholarship, Marilyn Francis and Louis Saint Amour Superior Graduate Student Scholarship, U L M Physical Therapy First Generation endowed professorship scholarship. Paxton and Nelda Oliver endowed professorship in speech-language pathology. This completes the consent items. Mr. Davison, thank you.
The consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board and are recommended for by the board staff and are recommended for approval. Are there any questions from the board in regards to the consent agenda items? Any comments or questions?
I've got a question.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, on number three, Louisiana Tech's proposal project.
Yes.
If there's someone from Tech that could give us a little some more details on that. It sounds like a very exciting project that obviously includes a building and I wonder if somebody can give us some details on it, on what we could see there in the future.
Thank Dr. Geis is with us.
Yes, thanks for asking, Mr. Busada. We're very excited about that facility. It's part of the overall efforts with the National Cyber Research Park to really grow cyber workforce and to support the Department of Defense and other government agencies in bringing more work and activities into North Louisiana. So this facility will be used more than likely, we can't say specifically until we have agreement signed, but by the Air Force in providing them access to some facilities they can't even get on their base and bringing Louisiana Tech faculty and students as well as other corporate partners to the Bossier community to support Global Strike Command and other government agencies that we're recruiting in in partnership with some of the other cyber companies that already exist in North Louisiana that'll access that facility. So we're real excited about that, and we expect the facility to be completed sometime around May or June of this this next year, and we'll be ready to start occupying that.
About how many people would you envision, you know, students and all, working over there in that building?
It's a three-floor structure. Because of the kind of space it is, you'll have people distributed out over pretty significant areas, a lot of classified space there. So probably on the order of two hundred and two hundred and fifty people working there. And there'll be a lot of overlap with other facilities there in the National Cyber Park that already exists.
Well, this sounds great. Happy you're doing it and could lead to a whole lot for our state.
Thank you. Are there other questions, comments? Recognizing none, may we have a motion in a second for the approval of agenda items? I one through I six?
I move second.
Ms. Donahoe, Ms. Donahoe, your move. Who seconds?
Losada.
Mrs. Losada, seconds.
Yes.
Are there any questions, any comments, any objections? Motion approved without objections. At this time, Mr. Janey and Mr. Mish will provide an overview of the discussion items. These are report only and do not require a vote from the board. Gentlemen?
Thank you so much, Mr. Robinson. Item I seven, University of Louisiana System Report on Internal and External Audit Activity for the period of October twenty-fifth through December fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Earlier this week, I emailed each of you a listing of internal and external audit reports completed by various auditors since the last board meeting. I also included in that summary audits that are currently in progress by the auditor and a follow-up timetable to ensure that recommendations made in prior reports are implemented. This is a report only, and no action by the board is necessary.
Mr. Janey, I just want to commend the inclusion of that summary. I found it very useful to see when you were going to do or when follow-ups were expected. I just appreciate that word.
You're very welcome, Dr. Clark.
I eight is University of Louisiana System Discussion of Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty-One, Twenty-Two First Quarter Financial Reports and Ongoing Assurances, Operating Budgets, Comparison to Actuals. This is a report of the comparison of budget and actual revenues and expenditures through the first quarter of September thirty, two thousand twenty-one. Campuses submit their quarterly reports to the system and they provide explanations when revenues have not reached budget estimates and when expenditures have exceeded budget estimates. Revenues. Campuses drew down twenty percent of their appropriations, which is about expected for the first quarter. Student fees were forty-seven percent of budget. Campuses received a majority of their fall semester tuition fees during the first quarter, and this is also expected. No statutory dedicated revenues were drawn down in the first quarter, and these funds will be drawn down in future quarters. Expenditures presented by function. Scholarships and fellowships expenditures were forty-nine percent of budget. Campuses award scholarships to coincide with the fall semester's student fees and tuition, and this is normal and expected. Expenditures by object. Operating services were thirty-nine percent of budget. Comparisons, campuses paid the Office of Risk Management the first quarter for insurance for the full fiscal year. Other charges were forty-one percent of budget, and as indicated by function, campuses provided fall semester scholarship to students during the first quarter. Auxiliary operations and athletics. In their quarterly reports, campuses also report results of their auxiliary and athletic operations. Auxiliary operations and athletic operations. The following are auxiliary and athletics revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balances projected through the end of the fiscal year. Campuses expect approximately two hundred forty-four million revenues, two hundred sixty-nine million expenses, and twenty million in net transfers in, which will result, which would result in an overall current operating deficit of approximately five million and an ending positive fund balance of approximately forty-three million. Athletic deficits. Most campuses are experiencing current year operating and/or cumulative fund balance deficits in athletics. The following campuses are projecting athletic deficits. With their quarterly reports, campuses provide certifications of certain assurances about their operations. Campus does not note any areas of immediate concern in their certifications. All certifications and individual university reports are available for review in the system office. This completes my report, Mr. Robinson. I would be glad to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Would you address one question I have about the athletic deficits? What is the plan to start eliminating some of this, some of these dollar deficits?
Universities have submitted plans, and those plans included increasing their revenues and cutting their expenditures. And but if there are any specific questions about those plans, perhaps a university could answer those questions.
Well, I just think there has to be a plan that specifically deals with each university as to how they're going to get their athletic programs back to being operationally, functionally, financially sound. They're not sound now, running these kind of deficits.
Mr. Robinson, you are exactly correct, and that was a conversation we had at the beginning of the pandemic when we saw the impact it would have on athletics. Each institution was to had put together a preliminary plan to reduce those COVID nineteen impacts within three years. It will be time for us to have presentations perhaps associated with the budget presentations on the specific plans for athletics. I will point out to board members that one of the largest components of athletic expenditures is not actually an athletic expenditure. It is the scholarships associated with athletics. And what happens with scholarships is they have to be expensed to athletics at the sticker price, if you will, not at the cost of serving the student. When you do that, you're adding the entire cost of the education of a student into the athletic budget. But at the same time, you're not recognizing any of the revenue that comes from non-scholarship athletes in the athletic budgets. So what's anomaly of the Kubo accounting rules associated with athletics is one that I will continue to fight at the highest levels because I do think it creates a distorted picture of athletics. That said, there's still significant financial pressure in the athletic environment that will continue to grow, and we will present the plans for each university. We'll have the presidents and their athletic directors come forward with their plans at a future meeting if that would meet your needs.
I'm not campaigning for us not having athletics at all of our schools, but I don't know how we can afford to do that continuously with these kind of deficits that are growing every year.
Mr. Robinson, one question I would have probably, Dr. Henderson. You mentioned that some of these deficits were due to the effects of COVID. You know, some of that HERF money can be used to offset some of these deficits, and I'm sure you've probably looked into that because that was one of the ways that money could be used.
Yes, ma'am. That is. Yes, ma'am, that is correct. The second round of HERF money was available to be used to offset revenue losses. The guiding documents associated that were not clear on what were those allowable loss revenues would be. The third set of HERF dollars that came in were much more specific and would be, those would be allowed uses. Ideally, those uses are going to go into, again, those uses don't begin to cover the losses, both the increased expenses and the lost revenues. They're certainly a help. They're valuable. It's one of the reasons why we're here. Several of us are here in Washington, D.C., is to talk about the ongoing needs associated with the COVID impacts, and hopefully those will help as well. But, Mr. Robinson, his point is well taken, and we will prepare an update on the plans that we presented last year. Mr. Robinson?
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments regarding the finance agenda?
Yeah, I just would like to see if I could get a copy of financials for the last couple of years or something because it's all kind of opaque without actually being able to study it a little bit.
Financials on each university?
However, if there's one at the system level, I don't know exactly what's available, but I would like to study it a little bit.
Supervisor Stokes, I will have Eddie Mesh get those to you. It will probably exacerbate the opaqueness of this status. And for members who may not know, Supervisor Stokes, she is and brings an extraordinary amount of accounting knowledge and experience to the table and will be a tremendous asset to us. Higher ed financial statements, the first ten years, I reviewed them. I walked away with nothing but a headache and more confusion. There are some nuances to the way that we have to follow some of the accounting standards associated with higher education, some which seem to defy logic, but I will let Mr. Mesh handle the answers to those when you have those because I'm sure it's going to be a very exciting conversation.
I'm sure it will, but I figure if I could get through the state's finances at all, I might at least give it a good shot.
We'll put something together for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mesh, I'd just like to comment that I appreciate Supervisor Stokes' request. I certainly have no acumen to go back and understand details at all, but I was taken by the presentation where you had percentages of dollars that were expended towards certain categories. And I think having a historical perspective to see if there are trends that we can understand shifts and or impacts of COVID or other circumstances would be helpful. So that historical base, I think, is certainly on target there.
Yes, sir. That's a good idea, and it has been presented that way in the past. And can, the next one, we can do that. We can make a comparison to the previous lifetime, like second quarter, second quarter. That will help.
Great.
Okay, is there any other comments regarding the reports? That concludes the business of the Finance Committee. Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, I return the gavel to you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Now we'll have Ms. Dunahoe, who will address the items under the Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have four items on the Personnel Committee agenda today that are being presented by the Consent Agenda. Ms. Kishan will give us an overview of these. Ms. Neal?
Thank you, Mrs. Dunahoe. Good afternoon, Vice Chair Pierre, Dr. Henderson, and board members. Item J one is Grahamland State University's request for approval to appoint Ms. Melanie Jones as Vice President for Advancement effective January third, two thousand twenty-two. Item J two is University of Louisiana at Monroe's request for approval to appoint Ms. Lisa Frey Miller as Vice President for Enrollment Management and University Relations effective January first, two thousand twenty-two. Item J three is University of Louisiana at Monroe's request for approval to appoint Dr. Mark Arant as Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs effective January first, two thousand twenty-two. Item J four is University of New Orleans request for approval to appoint Dr. Pamela Knett Henson as Dean for the College of Business Administration effective January one, two thousand twenty-two. Mrs. Dunahoe, that concludes the items to be considered today.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. These items have been reviewed by the staff and are recommended for approval. Uh, thank you, Ms. Neal. These items have been reviewed by the staff and are recommended for approval. Of course, if any member has a question, or is there a comment from the public at this time?
I would just like to congratulate, um, these guys, and especially Ms. Pam Kennett Hansel that, that I've had the opportunity to meet. Congratulations on this role. It's exciting to have a woman in that position.
Thank you, Julie.
Um, well, if, if there are no other comments from the, uh, committee or from the public, I need a motion to approve these.
Approved by Virgil Robinson.
There are second.
Second Stevens.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded that these items be approved. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Do we have any, uh, of our new uh, appointees here to be introduced by some of the presidents?
Good morning, Ms. Donahoe and, uh, members of, of the board. Uh, I would like to, to introduce Melanie Jones, our new Vice President of Advancement Research and Economic Development. Uh, Melanie comes to us with, uh, twenty years of, uh, experience in, uh, fundraising and advancement, uh, and philanthropy. And, uh, she is someone that we are incredibly excited to, to have us, have her to join our team uh, beginning in January. I think Melanie is on, uh, if she, uh, is, uh, would present, um, Melanie Jones, our, uh, new Vice President of, uh, Advancement.
Good morning. Thank you, President Gallo, and thank you to the Board of Supervisors. I am indeed elated to be joining Grambling State University and moving to Louisiana in a few weeks. I'm incredibly excited about the potential and promise of Grambling State and to be a part of this great system and, um, continue to reach new heights. So thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for your vote of confidence. I appreciate that.
Thank you, President Gallo, and welcome, Ms. Jones. We're delighted to have you. Uh, are there any others that might be, um, introduced to us at this time?
Yes, Ms. Donahoe.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, President Henderson, it's really a pleasure for me to introduce, uh, Dr. Pam Kennett Hensel, uh, our new Dean of College of Business Administration. I want to thank you all for supporting, uh, her appointment today. She's actually served as interim Dean of the College since July twenty twenty, right in the middle of the pandemic. Uh, and she has been exceptional in that role, proving herself to be a very strong fundraiser uh, and a great liaison to the New Orleans business community. As Supervisor Stokes mentioned, she is the first woman to lead the College of Business in its history. Uh, previously, she was Chair of the Department of Marketing and Logistics, and then that became the Department of Management and Marketing. Uh, but she's been a faculty member here for about twenty years, uh, starting as an assistant professor, and today she's a full professor, holds an endowed chair position. She's incredibly widely published in top business and marketing journals and, uh, has served as the President of the Marketing and Management Association, which is a, a national organization of marketing educators. So I'm very pleased to introduce Dean Pam Kennett Hensel.
Uh, thank you, President Nick Lowe, for the kind introduction, and thank you to the board for approving my appointment as Dean of the College of Business Administration at the University of New Orleans. Um, I'm very honored to be given this opportunity. Um, I, as President Nick Lowe mentioned, I've been at UNO for twenty-one years, which seems to have gone by very quickly, but, um, uh, and the university really does hold a special place in my heart. Um, UNO and the College of Business, Business Administration, as I don't have to tell you, play an important role in the city. Um, I can't walk into a business, um, where I don't run into an alum or a current student. Uh, but I'd be remiss to, uh, to say that I, I'm gonna, I do this alone. I mean, I'm really am blessed to work with a group of dedicated colleagues that are just as committed as me to enhancing um, our already excellent degree offerings and our community involvement. So again, thank you, and I look forward to meeting everyone in person and working with you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Nick Lowe, and welcome to you as well. Um, we look forward to working with all of you. Uh, Dr. Barry, do you have any of your candidates, um, available?
Matt, Supervisor Donahoe, unfortunately not. Uh, you know, we're, we're kind of pushing to get Dr. A. Rant on campus, and, uh, I, I think you've all met Lisa Miller when you appointed her as interim Vice President. Uh, we are very excited and appreciative of, uh, your support of both of those candidates. Uh, we look forward to them joining us and, and continuing our mission here on the Bayou. Thank you.
Great, and i- if at a later date they can be introduced, that would be great. Thank you. This includes the business of the Personnel Committee. Uh, Madam Chairman, I'll, I'll return the thing for you.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Donahoe, and thank you to all the committee chairmen. Uh, at this time, we will move to the, um, System Presidents' Report. Dr. Henderson?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, and the personnel actions, we actually have two items today. Uh, the board members were emailed the campus person, the general personnel actions for review. The staff has reviewed all of these personnel actions and recommends approval. Uh, Madam Chair, we'll need a motion in a second.
Motion Romero.
Second Stevens.
It's been moved by, um, Mr. Romero and second by Mr. Stevens that we approve the personnel actions. Are there any questions? All in favor? Any opposition? Those matters stand true.
Thank you, Madam. And the other item was last month, uh, you were sent the, uh, the annual evaluation reports for each president, and Madam Chair, we just need, the board just needs to accept those documents. We would also need a motion in a second to do that.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Motion move, Clark.
Second Salter.
It's been moved by Mr. Clark and second by Mr. Salter that we approve that action. Um, is there any discussion? Any opposition? If none, that stands approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, for System Presidents' Report, there, uh, four of us are, right now are in Washington DC, and over the last two days, we have had the great honor to meet with several members of Louisiana's congressional delegation, including, uh, Senator Cassidy. I've had lunch in the members dining room with, uh, one of our own, a graduate of the Management Leadership Institute, certainly a longtime fixture at ULM, uh, Congresswoman Julia Letlow. Uh, we were able to meet with, uh, Congressman Troy Carter in his office, and for members, it's always a great idea if you're gonna run for Congress to replace a senior member in midterm, uh, because you get a really incredible office. Uh, so he is, uh, he's, he's very blessed. Uh, we also met with Congressman Garrett Graves, and they were all very receptive to the work that we're doing. They were, uh, they, they pledged to continue to help uh, secure resources, both, uh, in the, the existing bills that are, are, uh, being fleshed out as we speak. And, uh, and also in, in coming opportunities to work closely with that. We were able to highlight a lot of our initiatives, and we heard from the members and their staff about the opportunities to engage in federal programs. It'll be continued emphasis on our research and grants in twenty twenty-two and other, uh, innovative practices. We talked earlier about the, uh, the Research Center in New Iberia, and we were able to showcase the economic impact of that center, the, the public health impact of that center, the collaboration that exists between uh, pharmaceutical industry that can be supported by, uh, uh, by that center and our pharmacy program at ULM, and so they, that cross collaboration is absolutely key in assuring our success. Uh, we're also here for the National Association of System Heads meeting, where they unveiled their, uh, what they call the product of their Big Think Initiative. And, and you should not be surprised, and I, and I hope you'll be, uh, affirmed uh, to learn that a lot of the Big Think, uh, is incorporated in the strategic framework that you approved and was developed by our presidents five years ago. Uh, we continue to, to lead in this effort and, and look forward to engaging in a national conversation that is so needed. Uh, the For Our Future twenty twenty-two conference, uh, is well underway. Uh, it'll be in Natchitoches, Louisiana. Uh, unfortunately, it will not be in December, but if we speak nice to the mayor, he may turn the lights on for us. The dates for that conference, because of some conflicts, are, are March tenth and eleventh, so I hope you will mark your calendar. Uh, we'd love to see you there. The sessions are gonna be featuring our faculty and staff, and they're gonna cover three tracks: our core community, our core performance measures, and then, of course, our core mission. Very, very excited about that program. And I'd like to give you an update on the Reginald F. Lewis Program. It's one of our proudest accomplishments of twenty twenty-one was the introduction of the Reginald F. Lewis Scholars Program. And in six short months, our scholars have matured in a way that, that I would never have expected. I was able to connect with two of our scholars, uh, on a trip that, uh, to Paris that was hosted by Northwestern State. This was a transformational experience for Eb and Derek, who were able to visit the Sorbonne to walk on the ground that had been walked by Pasteur and Descartes and Pascal and thirty-three Nobel Prize winners and six Fields Medal winners, and watched as their eyes went from wide in astonishment to starting to narrow as they started to think about the possibilities. They also visited and they presented at an on, at a university on, in Anjay, France. We've, and we've, uh, finalized some relationships with these two universities in the spring of twenty twenty-three. We'll bring all of the scholars there for some exciting learning experiences, including a, a day of lectures on the foundations of democracy, the foundations of science, and some learning experiences that, that I know I certainly would have loved to have had as an undergrad. Very excited about that. In addition, all of our scholars, scholars came to New Orleans for the Bayou Classic and some affiliated events. The scholars were recognized during the Legislative Black Caucus Brunch. They got to meet and interact with the governor, with Congressman Carter, uh, with, uh, our Speaker of the House and many other legislators. It's clear that this program has the support of our state leaders, which is important. It also is getting, uh, support from philanthropy, because this is not an inexpensive program. And we're thankful for most recent partners who've committed resources to the scholars, Verizon Wireless and Blue Cost, Blue Shield. The fundraising will continue throughout twenty twenty-two and in perpetuity. Uh, shifting gears real quick to Compete Louisiana. Last month, we launched our second Compete Louisiana corporate partnership with CLECO. And in just, uh, one month, we've already welcomed thirty new students from CLECO into Compete Louisiana. The coaches are working with each of them to determine their best pathway to a degree. And we're in the early stages of working with several other partners. We look forward to these corporate partnerships, which may not have been something we originally envisioned. Uh, but because of, of the, the, the leaders that we have engaged in that program, it's gonna, it's, it is beginning to take on, uh, great momentum. And, and finally, Madam Chair and members, as we, uh, enter this holiday season, I wanna, I wanna thank each and every one of you for your time and energy this past year. You know, we all went into twenty twenty-one after a, um, torturous twenty twenty with a great deal of hope. We still experienced challenges due to COVID nineteen. We still experienced unprecedented storms that, that we're just gonna have to call them unprecedented from going hereforth. We hired a new president for Northwestern State, uh, my dear friend Marcus Jones. We held our inaugural Blackmail Summit. We introduced the first class of the Reginald F. Lewis Scholars. And under the leadership of the extraordinary faculty across the state and the staff, we continued our core mission in educating ninety thousand students. None of this would be possible without your steadfast guidance, your engagement in strategic and fiduciary and generative leadership. And I'm very appreciative of this board and wish you and your family a very Merry Christmas and a, and a Happy New Year. Ms. Pierre, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson, and I think I speak on behalf of all the other board members. I, I am so very excited about all the initiatives that we have undertaken and continue to undertake, and of course, look forward to that in the year. Um, at this time, we would, um, move to the Board Chair's report. My part. Okay, so graduation season is officially upon us. Sandra Green has emailed a link to sign up to attend the Fall twenty twenty-one commencement ceremonies. The remaining fall ceremonies for twenty twenty-one are, uh, scheduled for December tenth, eleventh, fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth. So your participation means so much to the campus administration and the students, so try, please try to attend at least one commencement if you're able to. Um, training reminders. Bruce Janey wants to remind all of the board members that you must complete your sexual harassment and ethics courses before the end of the year. So please contact Mr. Janey if you need the links to complete those trainings. Um, at this time, the report of the nominating committee and election of twenty twenty-two board officers. As you remember, in our October meeting, I appointed the nominating committee. At this time, I'll ask the Chairman, Mr. Perkins, to give us a report from that committee. Mr. Perkins?
Yes, good morning, everyone. Uh, the nomination committee had an opportunity to meet uh, on this morning to discuss, uh, nominations for officers for the twenty twenty-two year. Um, there's two positions that we were tasked with considering. Number one, the chair position, and number two, the vice chair position. Uh, I remind everyone that the position of the parliamentarian is at the sole discretion of the chair. The chair is their, he or she's responsibility, he or her responsibility to, um, appoint the parliamentarian. That is not task, the task of the nomination committee. Uh, after discussion, uh, amongst the committee, we have a recommendation. Uh, I will start with the, the vice chair, if that's the pleasure of, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, our rec, our recommendation for vice chair, uh, for the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two year is Dr. Jimmy Clark. That is our, uh, nomination. I guess I can make the motion for, that's our, uh, make a motion to accept that, uh, recommendation.
Second.
Stevens.
Do we need a roll call vote for this one? Um, I guess we need to close the nominations.
Mr. Chairman, we will need a roll call vote.
Okay, do we have, do we have any nominations to, do we have any motions to close the nomination for vice chair?
Do we close nominations?
Okay, I have a, a motion by Mark Romero.
Second.
Second by Brad Stevens. So roll call vote, please, Ms. Carroll.
Mr. Barry Busada?
Yes.
Dr. Jimmy Clark?
I guess yes.
Okay, Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Donahoe?
Yes.
Ms. Methfin?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins, Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pierre?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Ms. Russell? Mr. Salter?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Stokes?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Congratulations, uh, Dr. Clark. Um, our next task was for the chair position. Uh, as a recommendation, the nomination committee would like to recommend or make a motion for uh, Ms. Elizabeth Pierre to move in officially into the chair position for the twenty twenty, uh, two year.
Second.
We have a motion to second to accept, uh, Elizabeth, uh, Pierre as the chair for the twenty twenty-two year. Um,
I'm moving to the nominations.
Yes, we have a motion to close nomination by Mr. Romero.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Robinson to close the nominations. Uh, all in favor to close the nominations?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, uh, can we get a roll call, uh, Ms. Carroll, as to the actual uh, voting to elect Ms. Liz Pierre as the chair for the twenty twenty-two year?
Yes. Mr. Barry Busada?
Yes.
Dr. Jimmy Clark?
This time without hesitation, absolutely, yes.
Mr. Mr. Steve Davison?
Yes.
Ms. Donahoe?
Yes.
Ms. Methfin?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pierre?
Yeah.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Ms. Russell? Mr. Salter?
Yeah.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Stokes?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you, Carol. Uh, the nomination committee would like to thank um, uh, Chair Pierre and, um, the rest of the executive board for, uh, for their cooperation, and we'd like to also congratulate Vice Chair Jimmy Clark and Chair Pierre for their new positions, and I would like to personally thank uh, past Chair Mark Romero and, uh, Christine Russell for their help in the nomination committee in far as getting the work done, and of course, Ms. Carroll and making sure to get us together, meeting on time, and adequately doing the things that we need, uh, to do. That being said, that is the, um, all that the nomination committee has to do. As a reminder, the, uh, the job of setting the parliamentarian is at the discretion of our new chair, Ms. Liz Pierre.
Thank you so much, Mr. Perkins, and thank you to the nominating committee, and, and thank you to all the members of the board for your vote of confidence. I really appreciate it, and I hope to be a good leader to you this upcoming year and working with Mr. Clark. And I hope to be a good leader to you this upcoming year and working with Mr. Clark. And at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Brad Stevens to serve as our parliamentarian if he would.
I gladly accept, and I appreciate your confidence in me to appoint me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So at this time, we will move to other business. Next year's calendar, first meeting of 2022 will be on Thursday, January 13 in Baton Rouge. This meeting will involve installation of next year's officers as well as new board member orientation. We are looking forward to the new year. You will be sent an annual 2022 calendar of dates this afternoon via email. So at this time, is there any further business that comes before the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move, Salter.
Moved by Mr. Salter.
Second, Busada.
Second by Mr. Busada, and without objection, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone. If I don't speak to you, have a very happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
This is everyone. Bye.